7:03, we call the meeting to order. Mr. Bailey, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Records show all board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
It has. We are working off of the revised agenda, which includes the topic information and discussion on the 24-25 school calendar again for information and discussion.
Thank you. Public comment. For policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student or enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must specifically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comment. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant, with only the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language, or gestures, attack specific persons, or make specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. I have one person wishing to speak. Mrs. Coleman, is there any more?
No.
Alright, thank you. Matt Kalish?
Alright, so this stems from back in November. Basically, it's been an ongoing issue. There's been bullying where my kids get on at the bus stop. It's been halfway addressed. I don't understand what the issue is, why my kids can't go to the bus stop and get on the bus safely without being pushed around and beat up by the kid that's expelled from the school district. I don't understand why that's acceptable. I've reached out to several people in the administration, and it seems like we like to play hot potato. Nobody wants to call me back or anything like that. So, I had to waste a day of vacation to come here tonight for this. I'm not overly impressed with it. So, I'm to the point to go to the next step, so I'm requesting a meeting because I want to know what the policies are, what the corrective actions are, why this is allowed. And it's just not only that. I've reached out to the administration down at the intermediate school, and instead of like calling me directly back as a parent, we'd rather send an email at 5:01 in the morning and expect to have a conversation with me at 1:00 in the morning. I, come on, who does that, guys? Like, that's not acceptable. I'm a fairly easy guy to get ahold of. Just be an adult. Do your job. That's what you kids get paid to do. This is not acceptable. So, I mean, my kid's cellphone's gotten broken on the bus, and I understand that's not necessarily the school's issue. But it's things like that that, why are we allowing this, guys? Like, who's held accountable for this? I want to know who's going to be held accountable for this because I want something done about this. And I'll tell you this flat out, I'm not going away until this gets addressed. And if that means that I have to attend or attain an attorney, I will do that. Like, I'm not playing around with you guys, so don't call my bluff. So, I want a meeting within a week, and if I don't have a meeting within a week, I'm just going to go to the next step. So, I don't care who it's with in this room, but I want to know who's being held accountable, excuse me, who's being held accountable and what the corrective action is going to be. I mean, there's just several things. Like, we had issues with the school account. I was supposed to get a call back about the lunch, or sorry, school lunch account. I was supposed to get a call back about that. Happened in November. Never got a call back. Why? Why should I have to call several people to get no response back? You know, I moved my kids back into the school district because it was convenient for me, but I'm really second guessing why that was a good idea. I mean, I live in Boaz, guys. Like, it's easy for me for the kids to get on the bus, come to school, instead of me dropping them to Eppica. Like, come on, guys. Do something here. I mean, it's just, it's just several things. And I know the one time I called, it was Friday before deer hunting. And I get that, people are going out. They're going deer hunting, I get that. But when you tell somebody you're going to call them back like the next week, call them back. There's just no excuse. You know, I mean, the cop was down at the bus stop one time, and what does that solve, one time? And I understand they can't be down there every day. I get that. But it's, according to the bus barn, and I hate referencing that, is it's the school's designated pickup. The school district issued that pickup. So, if that's where my kids are to get on the bus, then I expect them to be safe to get on the bus. It's not my job as a parent to have to sit outside and watch them and make sure that they get on the bus safe because we can't police that. So, and the bus barn is telling me it's the school district's issue. It's not their issue until they get on the bus. So, something's going to be done, and I expect it to be done. So, like I said, you guys are on notice. I'm giving you a week and I want a follow-up meeting. And it's going to be when, I'm not wasting any more vacation or time off from work to come here to deal with this. We're going to do it when it benefits me on my schedule. So, you guys can figure out what works for best for you guys, what works best for me. So, you guys are on notice, so figure it out because I'm not playing around with yous. So, and in closing, so I had to kind of change it up a little bit because I can't say what I really wanted to say. But as an alumni and a graduate, graduate of the school district, it's really sickening how the school, where it's at now compared to where it was when I was in school. There's just no excuse for this. So, like I said, I'm pretty available, but somebody's going to call me back because we're going to have a meeting and we're going to figure this out. So, that's all I got for today. So, thank you for your time.
On to reports. District administrator report.
Okay, a couple of announcements. There will be a special personnel and buildings and property meeting next Monday, a week from tonight on the 15th, starting at 5:30. Personnel meeting will be in the conference room. Where meetings are normally held, buildings and property will meet in this room right here. And then there will be the board meeting at 7 o'clock. So, personnel in the conference room at 5:30, buildings and property here in the IMC at 5:30, followed by the board meeting here at the IMC at 7 o'clock. Then a week from Thursday, on April 18th, policy and curriculum will meet. Policy meeting will meet first at 6 o'clock. Curriculum will follow. It's tentatively scheduled for 7:15 at this point in time. And then finally, there are two other things regarding board reorganization. On the 22nd of April, two weeks from tonight, at 7 o'clock, there will be the board reorganization and the swearing-in of our new board member, as well as in the coming days, board members will be given some information as to what officer positions they may wish to consider. And then you can get that information back to Laura Steele so that that is also available in the board book for the April 22nd meeting. A lot of meetings coming up, but do you have any questions or any further clarification on that? Okay, thank you.
Board member reports.
We had a Richland School District Foundation meeting on March 18th. The majority of that was discussing upcoming scholarship awards and then the scholarship presentations on May 22nd. We're still looking for people to volunteer to join the two open seats that we have for the expanded foundation board. And then also the outstanding alumni, that is coming up. So, if you have anyone that you know that would be a good candidate for that, please get that information turned in. Looking at having information put out in the Observer on Facebook and stuff for more information. And then we also had a personnel negotiations committee meeting on March 28th. We discussed the schedule, which is pretty much being wrapped up with the end of our, with the term of the election that happened. Had handbook, employee handbook revisions were done with that. Big one was the address code, which we ended up having a secondary meeting for that. The employee benefit insurance, which will be seen tonight. And then we also discussed potential referendum outcomes and how we're going to handle those. So then we also had a meeting on the 4th for personnel that was moved up because of the referendum and then with this meeting here so we can finalize some things. Finished up the dress code discussions and we're going to be getting into the negotiations with the teachers' union on April 15th. And then we also had more discussion with CPI with that and referendum results and discussions.
Quite a bit to report from Buildings and Property. First, meeting on Thursday, March 28th. We had multiple topics. The first was our normal schedule at a glance, just to make sure we're keeping up and not missing anything. Secondly, was the Sting van bid specs and timeline. So previously, we had grant funding that would supply us with three vehicles, but the bid winner at the time was not able to get a third vehicle. And so, because the money does not carry over in this grant fiscally, we've decided to now attempt to get that third. And so, there is, I believe, bid specs out and currently being compiled. We have our RC Park and Rec Agreement, which basically is kind of working in conjunction for what field and facilities are able to be used throughout the community. We reviewed the facility usage and associated fees, just to make sure everything's still seeing them apart. Sweep 1 and 2 agreements. For those unfamiliar with what sweep is, it's a consortium of local school districts that basically for a minimal fee yearly pay in for the use of expensive, large, a lot of law-related, for example, road utilers, things like that. And so, yearly that comes up, and I believe that's on consent later. The property liability, crime, and workers' comp insurance renewals. There had been bids that had come back, and due to us working on such a tight timeline, the renewal process began three days after when our board was meeting. And so, we had decided to move forward with options to seek other alternatives. There was a significant increase in prices, and there were other companies that you'll see tonight on action items that were able to come in significantly lower than what was to happen. We got an update on the sale of Jefferson Elementary, which is to continue its closing date for 30th of this year. And then we had discussion on possible referendum outcomes as far as if it went good or bad. That leads into our second meeting, which we had the following Thursday, April 4th. Our one topic was just referendum results and next steps. And much of that was just informational to learn, you know, discuss the ballot count, determine, since it's learning for all of us, how the money gets distributed to us, things like that. So mostly just a general overview to start the discussion for things moving forward. Alright, thank you. Is there a motion to approve prior meeting matters of March 27, 2024?
I move.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxell. Discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye. On to financial items. Approval of statement of cash?
I move we approve statement of cash dated April 3rd, 2024.
Motion made by Mr. Dowdna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would bring to your attention the balance of cash on the positive committee first. It's high at this time. We had three large payments come in. We got our third equalized aid payment come in, about 2.5 million. We had a per pupil aid come in, about a million, and we had a lottery credit come in at about 400,000. And so, we have some expenditures you'll approve tonight and some payroll, and then after that's done, we'll transfer some back to the ODI P.
Discussion? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 Alright, approval of invoices.
I move we approve committee first bank general checking account checks number 86150 through 86221, ACH number 232401245 through 232401291, and EFT number 20230081 through 20230086 for a net total of $627,924.92. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Dowdna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Untimer. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to add?
Yes, I brought your attention to page 3. Page 3, about a quarter way from the bottom. Check number 86193 is to Command Central for election April 2024. I had a question on this and wanted to give you some background here. We've been paying Command Central since about 2007, from what I can tell from my, from the records in Skyward. It's an annual payment for elections. It's a company that the school district and the city and the county all make payments towards, and then this company helps us create ballots and man the ballot machines. And it's based upon how many, we had three elections this year and two referendum questions. So, five was high for us, so this dollar value was higher than it's been in years past, but that's the reason.
Discussion? Mr. Dowdna?
Aye.
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 Mrs. Coleman, consent agenda items.
Accept the donation of calculators valued at approximately $56 from an anonymous source to Partner Charter School per policy 7230. Accept the donation of money valued at approximately $250 from Thrivent to Partner Charter School per policy 7230. Approve the five-year district library plan as required by state statute. Approve Richland's participation and fee of $250 in the sweep 1 and sweep 2 agreements for the 2024-2025 school year. Accept the Buildings, Property, and Transportation Committee's recommendation and approve the agreement between the City of Richland Center Parks and Recreation and the Richland School District for 2024 through 2026. Approve the budget revisions for the 2023-24 fiscal year as presented in accordance with the provisions of the Wisconsin statute 65.95A. This shall require at least a two-thirds majority vote. That is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Dicklin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxell. Discussion? Mr. Untimer?
Aye.
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 On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the anonymous source for their donation of calculators to the partner school and Thrivent for their donation of money to partner as well. So, thank you. Is there a motion to approve modified agenda?
Uh huh.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dicklin. Discussion? Mrs. Dicklin?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
On to information and discussion items. District vacancies and appointments.
Okay, so you'll see, this has a little bit of different look to it, just to try to make it easier for people to be able to see, navigate, and pull up on different devices as opposed to having to have PDFs. The top table shows the vacancies the district currently has available. We have a night custodian, we have the interview process for a 4K EC aid. We've got an art position primarily at the primary school. Speech and language pathologist is open. Cross-categorical position, which the board will be looking at acting on later on tonight, enclosed. And then a 4K and a 5K, both of those positions are posted through next Monday, the 15th. So, those are our vacancies that we have as it relates to positions in the district. And then the bottom table is meant to be kind of a recap of things that the board has acted on and closed at the previous meeting or were made aware of at that meeting so that the public is fully aware of who's in different positions, who was hired as this coach or this position. So, you'll see those three certified positions that the board approved at the last meeting, starting next school year, along with some support staff and co-curricular positions and some names attached to them. So hopefully that will help our public have a better understanding of the hires and who's in different positions. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Great. 9B grants?
Okay, so we have three different grants. This memo was submitted by Dr. Sher Johnson. Sher, I don't know if you're going to talk about this, or John's going to start off with it, so. Okay, Sher, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. The first one on the list is the peer mentoring grant. And essentially, it's a grant we have to join with another school district or CSU and write for a $25,000 grant, $25,000 grant that we share that will be used for mentorship or coaching. And so, we are working with the teacher leader team to use some of these funds to offset the cost for their training for coaching, as well as provide us with some really great opportunities with the Dane County New Teacher Project to support the growth and development of our mentorship program that we have for our new teachers here in the district. It would not only support our new teachers, but also the people who are supporting the new teachers. So, we need to continue to train that staff, those staff, and this is a great way to do that. And also, a side note, the Dane County New Teacher Project folks will help us write this grant. And they also found us a partner, so we're writing it with Marshall School District. They will be the financial, I forget what they term that as.
Fiscal agent.
Yes, the fiscal agent. Thank you. They'll be the fiscal agent, and so then we would just place our claims through them. It's where we get reimbursed. The second one is, it's a stipend with the Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools. Of some of you who are on the board, when we've had Sarah Hackett visit to tell us about charter school governance, she, it's with her group. And so, what we, we get $10,000 to use to help, it's going to help us do a lot of work we need to do as far as writing handbooks, bylaws, developing a marketing plan, and then doing some training for our governance board. And then, we already received that one. I mean, not physically received it, but they told us we got it. So now, I'm in the process of creating a plan with WRCCS as to how to carry that out. It's done the end of July, so it's short timeline. And then the third one is the immigrant children and youth grant. This is essentially for school districts in the state of Wisconsin who have had a 25% or more growth in their newcomer population, which is families that have never gone to school in the United States. So, and we were a school district that did have a 25% or more increase, and so that gives us the opportunity to write for this $40,000 grant. We received it in the 22-23 school year. And if you remember, we had a FAME program that we did after school. I, because of the Sting program, we're not quite sure the format that we're going to use, but what we'd like to do is do more social emotional supports as well as trauma-informed education. So, that's a majority of what we have happening. Does anybody have any questions about these opportunities?
So, Dr. Johnson, so these grants were in the application for, we did find out on one of them, but then all three of them would come back to the board for approval when we actually have, and the board can decide at that point if we want to use that. This is just the early stages, is that correct?
Absolutely. Yep. The other two haven't even, we haven't even finished writing the applications yet. We're in the middle of it.
When you say the other two, you mean the peer mentoring and the immigrant children and youth grant?
Yes, those are both due, one's due May 1st and one's due May 15th.
And just, just to be clear, so the middle one, when it says this work will be done by the end of July, you mean the work listed in there for the training, the government's for training, writing handbooks and bylaws, visiting charter schools, paper developing a market plan? That's the work that has to be done by July?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from board? 9C, closeout of budget 2022-23.
Okay, I'll help get the presentation set up here. But Mr. Bosworth will be giving a presentation on our final 22-23 numbers. We could get delayed a little bit with the transition that happened in the business office, but we do need to present that information to the board. So bear with me one second.
Okay, good evening. The first thing we'll start with is some big numbers to understand how the year closed out. The end of 2022, fund balance was 4.6 million. The end of this year '23, the fund balance was 7.3 million. You'll remember that large increase was due to supplanted ESAR funding, and the plan was to spend down that quote-unquote ESAR money throughout the 23-24 school year to the largest degree possible. That 2.4, excuse me, it's highly earning, 2.4 billion there, that's the plan. Plan from ESAR. $60,000, you know, this is committed fund balance. This is money that is set aside for the second half of health deductibles. And then $190,000 is earmarked for assigned fund balance. These are for things like the scoreboards outside, the roofs, the modeling inside, some signage outside. We're about 80% spent on that money. So, for all intents and purposes, 2022, 2023 ended with about a $3,000 shortfall. And then in your board packet, you should have three documents. One is a large packet of audit information. One is the smaller packet titled Required Audit Communications to the Board, and then there's a single audit afterwards. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things from the two smaller packets. I'll start in the Required Audit Communications to the Board of Education. And on page 2, as Mr. Board alluded to, I want to highlight difficulties in count and perform the audit. The completion of audit was delayed because district's trial balance and supporting documentation was not ready for audit until after the DFI deadline to the staffing turnover. So in essence, what they're saying there is they asked us for documents. Staffing turnover took us longer to find the documents this school year. They've all been filed, audits finished, but. They've all been filed, audits finished, but I didn't want to bring that to your attention. Further down that page, I want to highlight, we're pleased to report no such disagreements arose during the course of our audit, but disagreement management's of financial account reporting or audit matter, whether or not resolved for our satisfaction. They report none of those disagreements. That's the positive. We're going to go to page five in that document. By halfway down there, the June 30th audit, we proposed adjustments and reclassification to your records, the fact that these journal entries are considered to be material to the financial statements. Proposed entries were accepted by the district's management. All these changes are reflected properly in your audit and financial statements. So at the end of the year, the auditors gave us, I'll show you the list in just a second here, about 12 journal entries, previous year's journal entries, they wanted to see us put forward to move some funds around. Continue here. And then in that same booklet, there is appendix. So here are the adjusted journal entries. We were provided with 14 of those. Journal entry 13 and 14 we did not need, but we did use journal entries 1 through 12. To sum up, I'll go on next, I'll take that here, okay. And so the second packet I want to draw your attention to, single audit. So we had a larger financial audit, and we had a single audit. A single audit is, you need a single audit when you expend more than $750,000 in federal money. And we did that, so we get a single audit. It's primarily around special education, but it's a secondary audit that we go through. So if you'll go to page five of that, I want to draw your attention to some of the statements and conclusions. On page five, it tells us a significant deficiency is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control, and it's less severe than the material we can see, important enough to merit attention by those charged governance. We consider the deficiency described in the accompanying schedule of findings to be a significant deficiency. So they're saying it's a grade below material issue, but still an issue when they're talking about internal controls. On page six, I want to draw your attention to, bottom of the first paragraph, the results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. So there were no issues that arose during the audits that they felt that we were not compliant, that they needed to do any sort of reporting. We provided everything they needed to have, just not quite in the time that they hoped we would get to. If you could go to page nine. Here's where we'll get into a little bit of detail on internal controls. This is one of their findings, and this is the number of journal entries in the internal controls that they, they want us to get better at. Internal controls, given these limitations, during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control or compliance that we consider to be material weaknesses as defined above. However, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies may exist, we're not identifying. Again, they're saying we think we should do better with internal controls, but it's not to the level of material issue. A little further down that same page, we have issued our report on March 11th, which contains unmodified opinions. Unmodified is neutral to positive, they're saying there are no, there are no major issues here, we don't need to modify anything. And finally, on the bottom there, our opinion and schedules of expenditures of federal and state awards are fairly stated in all material aspects, respects, excuse me, in relation to the basic financial statements as a whole. So they're saying everything that was presented here is straightforward, it's accurate. If we could go to page 10. So here we're 2022 dash years 01 and years 02. So the two issues that they're telling us we'd like to get better at are the journal entries and the internal controls. Next year's 01, the size of district's business staff precludes a proper separation of functions to ensure adequate internal control. I have sat and listened to a lot of audits over the years, and this has been a concern of the auditors, I think almost every year I've sat and listened to them, and it's just kind of a weakness of a smaller school and smaller staff. We've definitely made some, some changes in 23, 24, and this is a 22, 23 audit, but regardless, it's there. And then towards the bottom there, next year's 02, material audit adjustments required to adjust account balances. I don't have as much memory of the number of previous year journal entries that are typically required in each school year. I know that it's fairly common, although there's, I just, you know, Mr. Board may have a little bit more background there, I'm told, and where this, this 22, 23 compares. And then just finally, kind of in summary here, so summary of final results, financial statements, it's the big overall audit, they're giving us unmodified, right? No changes necessary, that's a neutral to positive rating. Federal awards, same thing, unmodified, and state awards, same thing, unmodified. So those are all good findings. And this is just, I kind of duplicate of the pages there again, just talking about the material adjustments. We'd like to see that number be less than it was this year. And finally, does the auditor have substantial doubts to the auditor's ability to continue? Is it going concern? And the answer is no, we do not. All right, so there's kind of a quick overview of the 22, 23 audit. Try and ask some questions if I can, or if we need Mr. Board's help.
With the two areas of concern, with the internal controls and the number of journal entries, what's the process to create essentially an action plan to help improve those two areas?
Well, like I said, we've, we've made a couple of adjustments this year to improve internal controls already. Every year we'll report to them how our internal controls work. So we've already made some adjustments. And the number of journal entries, that's a hard one for me to answer at this point.
Did they explain what the number of journal entries, what the expectation would be? So we have a, have a goal to try to achieve, or is it just more of a general statement that there's too many?
At this point, my understanding is a general statement.
Thank you.
Do they give any recommendations? I mean, most, I'm assuming not, but you know, some, some surveyors or auditors will give suggestions on how to achieve some of the gaps, but...
They haven't to this point.
In the past, and it's just a general statement, I know that when they talk about segregation of duties, you just need more people, right? In order to really be able to do everything exactly the way they would love to have it done, we just don't have the staff for that. And so you do end up having one person who may be entering an invoice, and then somewhere along the payment cycle, you know, they're approving it as well, right? Just because our business office is four and not 40. But we try to take those and try to make subtle improvements along the way, but it would be really, really difficult unless we would double or triple our business office to really be able to find, zero findings for, for that.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. Nine D, election results.
Okay, so this memo was updated after our official canvassing meeting on Thursday, April 4th. It started at 4:30 and ended about 6:30, I think. So these are the official numbers that were reported after the canvassing. Seems like after the canvassing, there's always a few numbers that change from what was initially reported on the night of the election. But in regards to our three school board member seats, Brady Dowdna was running unopposed for the Area 4, which was an at-large. Mr. Dowdna received 1,651 votes to 21 write-ins. Mr. Bailey was running unopposed to, in the Area 3, which is a city seat, and the final numbers for Mr. Bailey were 1,662, again with 13 write-ins across all the municipalities. And then the write-in for Area 1 East, Melissa Wurz did not seek reelection. We had one registered write-in, that was Lee Vanlandeit, and Mr. Vanlandeit won that election with 150, excuse me, 150 write-in votes, and there were 83 other write-ins that were not considered official because no one had declared candidacy as an official write-in, but those were the numbers there. In regards to the two referendum questions, question one centered around the operating referendum. Shall the district be allowed to increase its revenue limit by 2.3 million next school year and then $100,000 increments the following years? That referendum passed by our stakeholders, 1,223 to 1,076, no's, 1,223 yeses, 1,076 no's. And then in the closest vote of the evening, question two, the referendum that centered around the capital improvement projects and the $27,160,000. That initial vote, or initial spread was a 12-person or vote spread after the canvassing that was reduced to eight. There were 1,156 yes votes, 1,148 no votes. So those are the official numbers. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the board members will be sworn in at the April 22nd reorganization meeting, and I guess I do just want to take this as an opportunity to thank our community, any of those who attended any informational meetings that we had along the way, the talk and tours, anybody who reached out by phone or email to try to get answers to questions that they have so that they could be an informed voter. I know I appreciate people being informed with accurate and factual information. And then finally, to everyone who took the time to vote and exercised their, their right to vote. Their vote mattered in this election, and the democratic process did, we're going to follow that process, so. Any questions from the board regarding the election results?
Nine E, referendum question one, non-recurring.
Okay, so this agenda item and the next one was put on here because we didn't really know what would need to happen and what kind of timeframe and frame things would need to happen depending on if referendum question passed or failed. And so again, question one, as I just mentioned, it did pass, and so question one will give the school district an additional $2.3 million in additional revenue for the '24, '25 school year. That budget is still being worked on. There will be various steps along the way that the Personnel Negotiations and Budget Development Committee will see. They'll see draft, drafts of those budgets, of that budget, as well as eventually coming to the board for drafts before, ultimately, at our annual meeting in September, the stakeholders will act on the budget for '24, '25, and then the board will certify and adopt that budget at the end of October. With that, we knew we were going to be facing a deficit. This referendum passage will allow us to not have to make any significant cuts or changes to what we currently have. We did, the board did act February 19th at a board meeting and said that if referendum question two, our initial staffing plans for next school year would be to stay status quo as it relates to teaching, we would still reduce administrative or upper management by one FTE, that is happening with the retirement of Todd Ostrander on June 30th. However, those exact positions and how it's all used, there could be a little shuffling there as we, as we figure out which classes might need an extra teacher or a subtracted teacher, whatever that might be. But the bottom line is those staffing plans that were approved stayed pretty much the same as they are for this school year, with the exception of reducing by the one administrator or upper management. The second part to question one is the salary and wage increases to employees throughout our district, and that process is in very early stages now that we know the referendum outcome. Mr. Bailey mentioned that we would be entering into negotiations with the teachers' union, but also we want to have conversations, if they haven't happened already, with all of our employee groups to present a proposal on what those wage increases or new wage schedules could look like, and then again, that would come to the board either here in April or early May to try to finalize those right there. Any questions, generally speaking, regarding question one? Thoughts, comments, or questions?
With the Q1, as it's the normal time of the school year that negotiations typically take place, does the passage of number one kind of add on to that whole process so that the board would only see one negotiation recommendation? We're not going to have to do teacher salaries, then the teacher salaries again two weeks later, for example?
That is correct. Well, let me clarify that. The actual negotiations with the teacher, by law, the, that group is only allowed to negotiate up to CPI, so that is 4.12? Mr. Bosworth? Okay, 4.12. We've been planning that all along, so the actual negotiations likely won't change because this additional money is not onto their base, it's supplemental income. There may or may not be, we may be able to piggyback the negotiations followed by a meet and confer on what to do with the additional supplemental income, or that may end up being a second meeting, but for all practical purposes, it's going to happen pretty close to the same time. It's just depending on can we get it done in one meeting, or does it need to happen in multiple? Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Nine F, referendum question two, capital bonds.
Okay, so again, much narrower vote for question two, but the second question again did, did pass by less than a half a percent, but it did pass. And so buildings and property met as well, we kind of gave them a, a what-if, what are we going to do? If this passes, doesn't pass, now we know that it passed, now we'll be working on the next steps. And we know that Nexus completed phase one with the board, entered into that agreement. Next steps, we will be looking at what to do, who's going to be managing the project, and how will that look? Looking at possible seminal of fee structures, things like that. In the end, I know that people will be excited to try to get some of these projects done, but the reality is the process doesn't happen overnight, even though the referendum passed, the issuing of bonds, and finding a strategic time and working with Baird to get the best bonds at the best interest rate for us is crucial, as well as getting a construction management firm to help assist us in that process and managing a $27 million project. This is a, the largest project that the school district has ever encountered. High school was over 15 million. This is significantly higher than that, right? And so we want to make sure that we're taking, doing our due diligence, making sure that we're transparent with the stakeholders on how the money is being spent and that we're going through a competitive bid process throughout. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I can certainly answer any questions. Again, it was time here, we didn't know what information we would have available tonight. I wish I had more, but I do anticipate more information in the near future, but again, happy to answer any general questions that we're going to have.
I have another on this one.
Yes.
When the time comes, could we consider, if it's possible, to create a, a shared document that is kept up to date on our website with how the spending is taking place as invoices are coming in, and just so you can watch the dollars, so to speak?
Sure, yeah, I, I fully plan on being very transparent with it. I, I need to, and Mr. Bosworth and I will need to reach out to some other school districts to see how they've done it. Is it, is there an easy process to quickly and easily be able to have every single check, whether it's $18.40 or, you know, 180,000? whether it's $18.40 or, you know, $180,000 show up on there easily? Or is it a manual entry process? I don't know that. Obviously, we've got to make it practical, but we certainly want to make sure that we're transparent with that. Anything to add with that, Mr. Bosworth, that you dug into at all?
Yep, or even monthly, for example. Yeah, just so that it's able to be tracked.
Yeah, the board will certainly see in every board book the expenditures that we have. It's just, is there an easy way to be able to say, this is referendum, and here it is, and here's how it all works out, and here's the bottom dollar of 27160, and you can dig through everything, right, and have it all available? That's the whole, I just don't know what it looks like at this point.
All right, 9G, 2024-25 school calendar.
Okay, so this was revised and add for the board, again, placed under information and discussion only. I just felt like it would be prudent of me to make sure that our board knew and our community knew of at least the options that they have available. So by state law, DPI says that school districts cannot start school prior to September 1 of any school year with students. There are school districts around that have requested waivers. There were a lot of waivers that were requested in light of COVID and post-pandemic. But outside of that window, generally, school districts were granted a waiver when they had construction projects that were going on where they needed to extend the summer construction window. In other words, start early, one school year, so that you can finish school perhaps in early May instead of early June, giving construction workers another 21 to 28 days to be able to do work during the summer without interrupting the educational opportunities, okay? We passed the referendum, and so I think it's prudent to bring it to the board to at least let them know that is an option. Certainly not something we have to do, certainly not something that we have to do for '24-'25, something we could look at for '25-'26, we could look at it for this year as well. I wanted it on the agenda simply so we could have a discussion about, is this something the board wants to consider? If so, what information do you need? Do you want to kick it to a committee? Do you just think it's too late in the year to do it this year? What are you thinking as a board? No action, just talk?
Personally, I feel that it's too late in the year to start that. I think that so many of the teachers and their families, just the community in general, have already made plans for this year. And I think starting to try to change something now, I think, would be a real issue for a lot of them. And so I would rather see us put it off and give, you know, give them time and then give them plenty of notice so they can make arrangements because it affects a lot of things. It affects, you know, the park sports, the school sports, the, you know, just the time that they've already got figured in. I know some of the teachers have already got plane tickets and vacations planned and things like that. So that's, that's my feeling, that I think it should, should not happen that fast to give them time to prepare.
Yeah, I agree. I don't really have anything to add besides everything that I was thinking too. You know, potentially having to go back to the committees that review the school calendar, maybe anticipation for '25-'26 school year maybe would be the soonest, but I think it's just too late in the year.
And just so everyone knows, the board did, when they approved the '24-'25 school calendar, we did intentionally, because of that early release on Wednesday, only approved one calendar. So certainly would organically come up that we would have to approve '25-'26 calendar anyway. Based on what you're saying, it could certainly be done at that time.
Yeah.
And one of the thoughts that I had, we're talking about starting early. Is there an opportunity to start late for the '25-'26 school year? Instead of moving next year's calendar up three weeks, would it be possible to push the '25-'26 back a few weeks to have the '25 summer, still have that bigger window? So instead of starting September 1, maybe it's starting the last week of September or the first week of October? Is that an option?
Yeah, I'm going to see if Dr. Johnson or Mr. Bosworth know the answer to that. Because we're digging a little bit.
I didn't come across any sort of language that related to how late you can start. It's only that you can't start before September 1, so I'll have to dig some more to find that. Maybe, maybe sharing goes.
I haven't heard of anything.
Even possibly a hybrid of the two. So instead of having all three, if it's three weeks, then it's all on one school year. Maybe moving up a week on one school year and back two weeks, if that's even an option. It was just thought process because of scheduling. You know, just personally, we're having a conversation of waiting for spring break and planning a vacation for ourselves too. So I know that there are plenty of staff that are in that process or in.
Staff and families, I'm sure.
And one other thought too is just the, anytime you move things forward, how is that affecting the training of any potential new curriculum that's coming into place? Training of new teachers, new staff that would be directly affected by having that put up even earlier?
And I have plenty of opinions. I'm sure anybody who's heard my voice knows I have one for every, every question out there. Sorry to the math educators, but I am 1,000% opposed on a number of reasons. If, Mr. Bailey, you mentioned starting late, well, I'm pretty sure that our schedule game with River Valley for football, for example, or other sports, that can't start late. And so in, being in the field of construction, I've seen half schools because half of it has been torn down to rebuild. And while it's inconvenient, they seem to make do. And I guess I would take it to try to help ease timelines is being on the Buildings and Property Committee. I guess I would take more, I would try to shoulder the responsibility to be more diligent in focusing on what things would be less impactful and, you know, how you can work and coordinate more efficiently. But we may have to hang some curtains at some point. Do they work Saturday or Sunday? So other alternatives. And then not to mention, without air conditioning in our buildings, it's, it's an unsafe situation to come in that early in August. Not to mention people's, you know, schedules, vacations. I myself will be gone for the whole second week of that school year. So it's just, I'm a hard no on that one.
I would agree, just commenting on everything everyone else has said. Four months is just not enough time, I think, to adjust schedules. So looking at beginning of April to the beginning of August, that would be difficult for my family. I think it's going to be difficult for other staff and community members as well. Had a couple of questions, just as other board members were speaking that sparked. So Scott came up with some other alternative ideas at pushing it later. Is there anything else besides maybe starting earlier that would give us a longer summer? Just thinking off the cuff here, like extending the school day? Is there any other thoughts besides just this calendar that makes us earlier? This one is only related to the '24-'25 school year, realizing this could be for other school years instead. Is there any other options that you?
We really haven't looked into it all that much in terms of to that depth. I just wanted to know, you know, the board. I didn't think it would, I thought it was my responsibility to make sure that the board knew this was something that they could consider.
Sure.
It certainly doesn't sound like there's a lot of support for it, but we can certainly look at other options if that's, if that's the goal. And we also don't know at this point, you know, are they going to need to do the majority of construction next summer or the following summer?
Sure.
Right, and we don't really have a construction timeline. I just wanted the board to know this, this is an option, right, that we could do. So I don't know that, I'm sure we could explore it.
And just to be clear, I wouldn't say I support it this year because I don't, I don't think four months is enough time. That is, to say if everyone was giving plenty of notice, that maybe that could be something for a future year. And then also two other things that were brought up were spring break. Scott mentioned spring break, Neil mentioned sports. So when I'm looking at this calendar, it doesn't look like spring break moved to me.
It moved one week.
It did move one week, okay. So just, besides just family plans and just personal people planning, what about trips that are planned on that? Like we had a band trip this year, I think there's an art exploratory trip planned for next year. I'm not sure how that would affect. And again, we've already discussed it, nobody's really supporting it for '24-'25, but just keeping that in mind for the future. And then Neil mentioned sports. Does the school year and educational time affect sports times? From what I see, all sports start before the school year starts anyway.
They're limited on the number of contact days they can have leading up to, I believe, the start of the school year though?
I thought that was the start of the season.
I defer to the expert.
That's right, exactly. I just know when my son's played soccer, it felt like half the season was over before the first day of school.
I believe the sports calendar would always with the WIAA states. So the first day of practice is still the first day of practice. And even if we're not in school yet, we would be playing games during that time, even if we don't, you know, if we start. Essentially, I think, looking at this, we would start almost the first day of football practice. And then next week is volleyball soccer, and it would just fall into place. And they would be playing games during all the time in the spring. On the other end, we would be playing games while we're technically not in school because the season extends so late in May, and the state tournaments would happen in June like they always do.
So just to be clear, what you're saying is our school calendar for academics doesn't necessarily affect the WIAA calendar?
To the best of my knowledge, it does not.
That's all.
Anything else from board members?
No, I just, I think I would need to see a list of what projects can be completed in the timeframe before I would make a decision on this.
I appreciate you bringing this to us to know that that's an option in future years. I think that's always good knowledge to have.
Does he have direction, Mr. Board?
Yeah, I had a cool stay with status quo, and we at least talked about it. Thank you.
All right, on to action items. 10A, the MOU with Paquette Center for Psychological Services.
Okay, so in the past, we've had an MOU, Memorating of Understanding with Paquette Center. They have been providing some services for some of our students. Our obligation on the district end is to provide those students with space and supervision as needed if they're younger so that they can receive some therapy sessions in a virtual format. It's very difficult for families to get their child, get them to a place they need to get to, get it back, and still maintain some consistency in their educational day. This has worked out really well with us. I'm going to ask Mr. Joe Seum to weigh in here in a second. But generally speaking, we're asking that we continue that MOU with the Paquette Center for the next two years, '24-'25 and '25 to '26, school year essentially the same as, as what it is right now. Mr. Joe Seum, anything to add?
No, I mean, I think as, as we all know, coming out of COVID, there was a huge increase in mental health issues amongst our students. And districts are trying to find any resource that they have available, including community counseling services. And Paquette came to us, I think, last year. It's worked very well. Principals can certainly talk personally on how it's impacted their building. But from what I've heard, it's very well received, parents like it, students like it. So I'm glad that Paquette is willing to continue our relationship for the next couple of years.
To the point where we're actually looking at expanding it with other?
Correct.
Entities, yeah.
No cost to us, we just have to provide a space, which we can do.
So that is the recommendation from the administrative team that we approve the MOU for the Paquette Center for the next two school years.
Any questions from the board? Your motion then to approve the MOU with Paquette Center for Psychological Services as presented?
What is the motion?
Motion made by Mrs. Wertz, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mrs. Dickman, discussion? Mrs. Wertz?
Aye.
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 10B Insurance Renewals, Property Liability, Crime, and Workers' Comp.
Okay, so this is coming at the recommendation of the Buildings, Property, and Transportation. We really kind of have two sets of insurance. The first is property liability, crime, and workers' comp. The second is health and dental, which is the next agenda item. So this is just in regards to the first. We have explored continuing our relationship with Wells Cooper &amp; Elliott. They have worked with the insurance companies to try to get us the best price possible. Drawing a blank here on who has covered our insurance in the past.
Liberty.
Liberty Mutual, thank you very much. They're, Liberty Mutual, they had, their renewals came in higher. And so Jeremy from Wells Cooper &amp; Elliott worked with some other companies, was able to get a bid. And so the recommendation from the Buildings and Property is to have Wright Specialty take care of our property liability, crime, and workers' comp. Although workers' comp would still be done through employers, that's kind of independent. And it would be a total premium of just under $163,000. Mr. Bosworth, do you have anything to add?
No, I think the table is there for folks to take a look at. And you can see last year's premium was 154. The Liberty renewal came in at 168, the Wright's in at 162. The other competitor that Jeremy was able to find, the CAC, was considerably higher there. And then there's some advantages in the deductibles as well to go with Wright Specialties. And as well as Wright Specialties works exclusively with schools and municipalities. And Jeremy is here as well.
Anything from the Buildings and Property to add?
I think it was supposed to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, I think a 13% increase approximately is what was being quoted to us. Some of the major benefits, as Mr. Bosworth had mentioned, is the deductible side. If you'll notice in the table, Liberty on the left side has a 1% of total damage with a million of $100,000. And considering the values of our roof, that could get really costly really fast versus a standard $50,000 on the other side. One of the other major things was the overly inflated number that the, they seem to have appraised our buildings at, almost to purposely drive the cost up. Whereas Wright Specialties came in at what should be more reasonable as far as true value. Meaning, the benefit to that is as we do spend referendum money and increase the property value, we will not see as great of a rate of increase, being that Wright Specialty is, is coming in at a better rate of return. So we thought we had to move forward with the cost savings potential.
So that is the recommendation from the Buildings and Property to use Wright Specialty for insurance. And then employers will continue here, workers' comp, total premium just under $163,000.
I move to approve the information contract with Wright Specialties as presented.
A second?
Discussion? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
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 All right, 10C, 2024-25 Insurance Renewals, Employee Health and Dental.
Okay, so this is the second part of our insurance. Worked with USI, has negotiated on our behalf with courts for health and Delta Dental for our dental insurance. They've done a very good job over the years. Last year, they were able to take what was a projected four and a half and turn it into a reduction, a decrease of just under 1% reduction. This year, our initial bids or quotes from courts came in, again, right around 4%. And they were able to they were able to negotiate that down to a 1% increase with no plan design change. Health insurance trends across the country are between 7% and 8%. So, you know, we've been able to maintain some pretty good health insurance without a huge increase in cost. 1% is, is, oh, I don't have the employee portion right off the top of my head, but I believe it's about $4 a paycheck is what 1% will, will cover. There is no increase to the employee dental insurance plan. So that plan is really stable without any increase for, I believe this is the fourth year in a row now that our dental is going to stay the same. So the recommendation from Personnel Budget Negotiations Committee is to approve the 1% increase to health insurance and a 0% increase to the dental for 24, 25. Mr. Bosworth, did I forget anything?
I think so.
Anything from Personnel that I forgot?
Could you just touch on the family plus, or the employee plus one portion?
Sure, yeah. We did. So if you remember, when we did the staff survey, one of the things that came about in that survey was, you know, could we explore a, instead of just a single plan or a family plan, could we explore an employee plus one? Maybe it's a single parent with a child, maybe it's a employee plus a spouse, but could we explore that? And our initial math was that, well, it might work if the, but we had, we had to know what the actual breakdown was. So USI ran some numbers for us. And the family plan, which is what a majority of our health insurance folks are on, that would have increased dramatically. Single would have actually went down a little bit. And then the employee plus one would have been somewhere in the middle. But it was not their recommendation. It's not our recommendation to do that. It would have come at the expense of significant increase to a lot of our employees on our health insurance plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, we have a kind of a proactive health and wellness benefit. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Do you think that that plays a role in such a minimal increase versus the norm, so to speak?
I think, I don't think, I know 100% certainty that it played a huge role into our premium reduction a year ago. And the thought was that statistically, employers who implement these kind of wellness programs will start to see better utilization of their health insurance. So I think indirectly now, we're seeing people that, one, are informed about their insurance benefits, and then, two, are having better communications with their family physician, annual checkups, those kinds of things. And that just naturally allows folks to be better consumers of their insurance product, either because they're catching something earlier, or they're just having a better overall sense of health. So indirectly, I believe that it's, that it is. And we anticipate that continuing for a while.
Mr. Ward, so if employees have questions or anything, does USI have someone that comes in once a month, or, or any that they're on site to help employees?
Yep. If employees ever have questions, they should start with Amber Bingham. USI is available onsite, usually quarterly, available in virtual meetings almost anytime. Very accessible and get any of their questions answered. But I would start with that by going through our HR Director, Amber Bingham.
Thank you.
Is your motion then to approve a 1% increase to the employee health insurance plan with courts, and a 0% increase to the employee dental insurance plan with Delta for the 2024-2025 school year?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Dickman. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 10D, the 2024-2025 Employee Handbook.
Okay, finally, the handbook. A couple of disclaimers at the beginning. One, we used to have a handbook and an addendum. And what we found was that we were printing both of them nearly every year. And the cost savings by just having one book and including all of that into one handbook is not only easier for employees, but also in, over the course of time, probably going to save us some money as well. So when you're approving the handbook, you are also looking at the addendum. All of that information is injected into various parts of the handbook. So there no longer will be two books to approve. With that, as we get into some of the changes or proposed changes, you'll see in the memo that there's a handful of technical changes similar to policy. These are changes that don't necessarily change the meaning of the handbook language, but rather just to clear things up. Maybe there's a grammatical mistake. Maybe there's a better way to phrase it. That's the intent of that. But all of those changes are referenced by section number in the first part of that memo. And then the things that have contextual changes, things that, that actually have some meaning changes to, I believe there are seven in total. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There are seven. And I'll just kind of give a quick summary of those things. They are all listed in the memo as well. 1.29, some clarifying dress code language to ensure that all employees are consistently dressing and grooming appropriately. We found that our old handbook language was outdated. It was not being followed. And so in our full handbook audit, if you will, we wanted to get some better language here. I will point out, and it's highlighted there in the memo, there are now two attachments that are attached. One is the handbook. That employee handbook has original proposed language for dress code, 1.29. However, after taking it back to Personnel and revisiting the dress code, the attachment is the actual proposed dress code language. It's more modern language than what we have right now. It tries to use professional language. The folks should dress professionally. And then we will have supervisors and administrators stay a little more clearly for the folks in their departments or in their building, what those expectations are. But make sure that we're looking at the PDF that has the proposed dress code language as it relates to 1.29. Everything else that I'll talk about is in that employee handbook proposal PDF. The next thing is section 1.86, and that is eliminating the two-hour minimum for personal day usage when a sum is required. This was something that we added as an employee benefit last year. Instead of having to take personal days in half-day or full-day increments, could we do something with a little bit less time increment? Because most people wanted to be here. They only had an appointment that they needed to be gone for an hour and a half. Why make them take a full half-day? We thought administratively that it may be problematic from an administrative standpoint if we didn't have a two-hour minimum put in. Administration's saying, actually, it's just as problematic to have this. Let's just let them be gone when they need to be gone. So if they can get back here in 45 minutes, let's allow them to take 45 minutes. So the change or the proposal is that we eliminate the two-hour minimum. We continue to have 15-minute increments that personal days could be used in. 1.93, again, we went a little bit more of this flexible personal day allocation. Instead of having two banks, one personal bank and one reversible bank at the beginning of the year, we allowed employees to have all of those as personal or PTO days. Okay? Again, this was an employee benefit, employee-friendly policy. But one of the things that we noticed was if, because we, employees were required to use their personal time before they could dip into their reversible time. One of the things that we noticed is if somebody had an illness that made them miss a significant amount of time early in the year, they actually lost all flexibility to use any of their personal days because they had to use those first. And so this proposal is saying, we'll still ask employees or require employees to use their personal days first. However, they, once they get down to two personal days, then they can choose personal or reversible. Okay? And so they can still take that personal day late in the school year, or at some point, they can do something personal as opposed to being designated to just what's allowed for reversible days. 1.94 is just an allowance to allow the business official, who's generally responsible for hourly employees, and the superintendent, who's generally responsible for our certified staff and administration, the ability in extenuating circumstances to lift the half-day increment for reversible days. Okay? So once they use their personal days, they're in their reversible bank. Right now, they have to use them in half-day or full-day increments. There have been a few extenuating circumstances that I think we weren't exploring. For instance, somebody had surgery, and for the next six weeks, twice a week, they have 45-minute physical therapy sessions. Right? Instead of making that employee use half-day increments for each one of those physical therapy sessions, that way they would be able to come to either Mr. Bosworth or myself and say, hey, here's my situation. Feel this is an extenuating circumstance. And then give us the ability to grant it in those extenuating circumstances. Not just the general, but truly extenuating circumstances where they're scheduled ongoing occurrences. 2.28, in the past, we have not allowed teachers or staff that aren't required to be here during school closures, we have not been able to come into the building on a school closure day. The old handbook language stated, the employee shall not come to work. Okay? We have a lot of employees that live close, or the weather has cleared up, and they want to be here. They take it as an opportunity to get some work done, and they can get it done without being interrupted. And we don't necessarily want to take that away from them. And so this handbook language would allow them to voluntarily come in on one of those school closure days, as long as they had prior approval from their supervisor or building administrator. We just want to make sure, you know, there's, we've got the ice cleared off the sidewalks, that one of our custodial groups isn't waxing the floor and they can't even get into that section of the building, those kinds of things. We just want to make sure that there's a little check and balance there. Two more, and then I promise I will put it up to questions. 3.2.10, this is primarily, section three, is primarily regarding our hourly employees. And so one of the things that our hourly folks have said is very problematic is when we have extended breaks in the school year. Our, some of our support staff, our classroom aides in particular, they're not working during Christmas break or spring break. And that is detrimental to their financial income when they have huge decreases in their paychecks. And so what they're asking is that we give them the ability to use up to three personal leave days in half-day increments for days over the holiday break and the, and spring break. These, these long weeks where they don't get to work at all, allow them to use up to three, so long as they have them available, and so long as it isn't already a district closed day. Right? That we're not observing a holiday, those kinds of things. And this would allow those folks, I think, a little bit of an ability to, one, be responsible with their leave time outside of those, to have them available. Two, to help minimize those huge decreases in their paycheck. That January 10th paycheck and typically that April 10th paycheck is problematic for our hourly employees because of spring break and holiday break. And then finally, section 353, again, this is mostly due to, with hourly employees and those non-administrative contracts that are working full-time. Okay? Full year. We have some maintenance and custodial folks that are working 260 days out of the year, as well as some administrative assistants and district office personnel. Right now, the language states that they have to use vacation by June 30th of the fiscal year or they lose it. Okay? They have found that oftentimes they are forced to take vacation at a very busy time of the year, just so they don't lose it. And so their ask would be similar to some administrative contracts where they're allowed to carry over unused vacation as of June 30th, that they can carry them over until December 31st. They basically would have six additional months to use that unused vacation where they're not leaving their post at a time where it's very busy, just because they're going to lose it. And they may be able to schedule vacation at a different time where it's a little bit more friendly to them and truthfully to the school district as well. So those are the seven contextual changes. You have to stick it through Personnel. I'm happy to turn it over to them. I'm also happy to try to answer any questions or clarify the information we've already had.
I have a question, Mr. Ward.
Yes.
On the 1.2.9, staff dress and, and dress code. So I just want to make sure, so this, this wording is already in place? We're just kind of tweaking it a little bit on a lot of this?
The general meaning is in place, but this is definitely reworded policy.
Okay. And then, so from what I'm understanding, as far as like homecoming week and things like, you know, special events, things like that, where they have the jam-a-day, they have, you know, school colors, that kind of stuff, that would be then up to the principals then to, in each building?
Yeah, when we have casual Fridays or a homecoming week, those kinds of things, then absolutely, there's special dress days and service days where they're not in front of students. Those would be an opportunity to be a little more casual.
Okay.
Very similar to what we're doing right now.
Okay. That's right. And for any reason, if they have any set type of special circumstance where they might have to dress a little more casually just for that, whatever work they're performing, that would be again up to the principal to decide?
Or their supervisor, right? We would require our custodial people, the rolling lawns, to be in a shirt and tie.
Yeah.
It has to fit their professional.
Thank you.
Yep. Maybe I should ask, did Personnel, did I miss anything? Or anything you guys want to add from the committee?
One of the, one of the big things that we discussed was the difference between a 4K or a 5K teacher versus someone who is doing AP chemistry teaching. The dress code is going to be flexible to better suit their responsibilities for what they're doing. It doesn't make sense to have somebody in suit and tie and a dress that has to get up and down on the floor because of the age of the students that they're working with. So that's worked into that language. And that's why we have a lot of this under the discretion of their supervisor.
Also, I'm not asking the preschool teachers to wear sneakers.
Maybe needed.
Is there a motion to accept the Personnel negotiations and the Board Development Committee's recommendation and approve the changes to the 2024-25 Employee Handbook effective July 1st, 2024?
Make a motion.
Leaned by Mrs. Wertz. Is there a second?
A second.
Mrs. Dickman, discussion? Ms. Raxel?
Aye.
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 I make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to section 19.851 CE Amber F and of the Wisconsin Statutes 18.125 to consider employment promotion, compensation of employees discussing individual employee hiring and administrative evaluations, and to discuss individual student discipline and student open enrollment applications and individual PPRO information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Discussion? Mr. Dowd, now.
Aye.
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 Aye.